I want to thank everyone for coming out this morning or whatever. And this is an information meeting and there is an opportunity for us to take action on it. But before we get started, if everyone would take a bow, your head, I want to take it for prayer right quick. Father, we want to take and thank you for the opportunity that we can take and come together as a group of people, as a community, the Lord, and be concerned about things in our community. And Lord, you've given us the opportunity also, we can take action, and you give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we can take and do these things in a responsible way. Well, we can't do all this on our own, but I do know, Lord, that if we take and seek you and ask for your guidance, that you're very diligent about taking and giving it to us, Lord, because you said if we any of us lack wisdom, just ask you, and you give it to us abundantly, Lord. So Father, we want to thank you for everything you do for us each and every day, and that's just in the name of Jesus. Amen. This is a public meeting, and as everyone come in, I hope everybody got signed up back here at the back. It is a requirement that whoever attends, that they do take and sign up. Put your name down, and we'll just take and go from there. We're not going to take and send you a bill or nothing like that, so. But it is one of the requirements. And if you have questions, if y'all would, wait until we get the program presented, and hopefully that whenever we get the program presented and everything's laid out here, that it will answer a lot of your questions. I know there's probably two or three questions on your mind, and they will be answered. This is what we're taking and striving for. Also, for those that's never been in here before, the restrooms right through this door here and back to the right, so if anybody needs that, so you won't have to be looking around everywhere. The responsibility that the hospital board is taking, undertaking is, we see a need that is cropping up, is coming up, and we wanted to take action on it. Because everything that we're doing now is going to take and influence us, but folks, it's also going to take and influence our children and our grandchildren. Because what we're planning now is something that will take and be very viable and very doable for the next 20 years. I probably won't be here in 20 years, but I do have children that's going to be here, and I hopefully have grandchildren that's going to be here, and I want them to take and have a healthcare system that they can take and go to and get good care. So that's what our goal is, because we recognize that there is some problems and there's some issues that is coming up, and we're going to take and address those. And one of the things that we've taken and learned also is we're trying to be good stewards of what we have. Mayberry County is a very unique place. We don't have a great big tax base, so we don't have a whole lot of tax money. So we have to be very, very good stewards of what we have. And we believe that we've been good with it, but it's coming to the point now that we're going to need to take and make a decision to take and do something to take and help, make sure that we have healthcare in the next 20 years. I don't take and do any scare tactics. We're just going to take and lay out the facts and tell you all exactly where we're at. Before we get started any further, I want to take and introduce a few people. I want to take and introduce the board. We have Gail Richardson right here, Zona Gatewood, Dana Rasko, I'm Alan Smire, Lana Nichols, unfortunately, kind of feeling a little rough, so he's not here tonight. So that's the five people that you have on the board. We have Dennis Fleener, our hospital administrator. Then we have Stephen Lawson. Jason?
Josh.
Josh, I'm sorry, Josh. Then we have Clay Benford and Robert White. Okay, these guys over here are the ones that are going to be taking, bringing the program to you and presenting what they have arrived at. These are folks that we have taken and hired to take and have the expertise of taking and progressing on. There's so many things going on to take and get this to the next step, that we do not have the resources within our own selves to get that done, and that's the reason we have to take and hire these. There's a lot going on in the healthcare industry and a lot of rules and regulations that we have to follow. That's the reason that we have these folks, and I'm glad to have them on board. The first thing that we're going to take and do is going to take and have Robert White to take and come up. He is a financial advisor, and he's going to take and answer some of the hardest questions first. Because if we don't have the money to take and proceed on, we don't need to be doing what we're doing right now. But he's taking and showing us what we can do and where we can go. Robert, do you need to stand up here or what do you need?
Yeah. Unfortunately, vertically challenged, so it might be easier if I can up here. Everybody getting okay? All right. My name is Robert White. As you said, I'm with Samco Capital Markets. Samco has been around for 30, 40 years and one of the largest players in the municipal finance business. For example, we represent Mule Shoe ISD, and so we have about 85 of these types of transactions that we do with my team a year worth a couple billion dollars. And so every operator is slightly different, which makes this job fun. So I appreciate your time tonight, and I'm going to be somewhat brief, but I wanted to go ahead and get some of the financial pieces on the table here that we'll be ultimately discussing. Is that better?
Yes.
And y'all have this that you were going to shine, or you want me to just go up here?
Yes.
Would y'all want to shine this on the screen here? Okay, so a couple of pieces that we always take into account as we're potentially planning a bond election. To the extent that a community has a want or a need that they're desiring and they are trying to be financial stewards, they call us in and we help them through the bond election process, as well as selling the bonds to the market and all the paperwork, et cetera, that goes along with such transactions. And so the first place we always look is to take a look at the statistics of the community that we're looking at, and what is that comprised of? And here in Mule Shoe, you guys have a very stable community from our perspective. A lot of districts, mainly out west even, we have really high oil and gas values, which creates a taxable value that fluctuates over time and can happen very rapidly. Here in Mule Shoe, as we look at your tax base, you guys have kind of steadily increased over time and are now currently at around 377 million for your certified values this year. So that's one aspect we always look at is how do we look at your statistics and create a bond model that will survive the test of time or survive any economic cycle that will hit a community? Because that's what we want to do, is put something in place that, one, you guys can afford, and, two, are not going to have any surprises in the future for you. So you're going to see up here, if you can read it, the taxable value that we're assuming here is 365 million, which is about 12 million less than your current value. Okay? You have not really had any year in the past 20 years that I haven't seen where you've gone down in value. But that being said, conservatism always leads the way here on designing a bond model that will stand the test of time. So we're always going to be preaching conservatism, 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 so that you are not surprised. So one way we do that is the taxable value, which I just described. The next is the interest rate assumption. I read an article this week, which I thought was somewhat funny, in that the last time interest rates were this low, Eisenhower was president and Elvis Presley released his second album. And so 1956 is the level that we're surpassing right now in interest rate levels. It's truly unbelievable. We've had about nine of these deals in the market in the past 10 days or so, and some of them are 30-year type bonds, like a home mortgage, that we're selling at 3% type rates. And so anytime we see money at less than 4%, we're just kind of flabbergasted by it. But 3% is just truly kind of unheard of.
You need to talk.
It is a very good rate. And so, but that being said, I can't come in here tonight and say, "I can guarantee a 3% rate if you guys choose to move forward with an election in a couple months from now," because you just never know. So another way we add conservatism to the bond model is we add conservatism to the interest rate. So tonight, I'm showing around 3.6% interest rate as another layer of conservatism. And then everything that we're going to show here are fixed rate bonds, and so we're not looking at any kind of interesting structure or variable rate stuff that could reset on you and change that rate. So once you lock in a rate, it's locked in for the life of the bond to the extent you don't refund, refinance it at lower rates, which might be hard to do if rates hold up where they're at. And then we assume a collection percentage of 98%, and it's just level debt service, a lot like a home mortgage would be. Your annual payment or your monthly payment is level, it's the same every single month. That's the kind of philosophy, the approach, the structure here for this community. And then the other thing we always want to do is take a look at the useful life of the assets that you're looking at. You don't want to finance computers over 20 years when their useful life is probably five or less, right? And I know we're not looking at computers, but it paints a pretty good picture. So we're showing 20 years here on the structure, which is easily under the useful life of the assets you're looking at. So that's another layer of conservatism and bond model planning. So if we can scroll down just a tad. The other thing we want to do is we want to show you a range of values, right? A range of bond election values or scenarios. Because ultimately, these things can change, and people can ask questions in meetings like this, "What about this? What about this?" And so we just like to have a range here. But what we have been talking and discussing about, kind of focusing in on, is the $9 million range, or the scenario two, has been kind of a focal point for us. So 9 million, over 20 years, at 3.6%, is roughly 640,000 of annual debt service for the hospital district. And at a current INS tax rate of 7.67 cents, it would raise it 10.23 cents, there in yellow, to 17.9 cents. So there on that second line is 10.23 cents for 9 million. So that's the finances as they apply to the hospital district. And typically, at this point, everybody's saying, "Okay, that's great. I see the tax rate, but what does that mean to me? And what does that look like on my home?" Because these are property taxes. So what does a $9 million scenario two look like on a $100,000 home? It is $102.30 a year, which is roughly $8.53 as a monthly projection. So to the extent you voted, if you move forward with the calling of a bond election, and you called it and were successful, that's how much your property tax would increase on a $100,000 home. Now, everybody has different home values, and so that changes depending on what your home value is worth, but $100,000 is what we're required to show in the parameter documents, the election documents, and so forth. And so, and it's easy as math. So $8.50 a month for supporting a $9 million bond election. Obviously, there's multiple amounts here if so desired, and we can get into it, but ultimately, I think that that's what we were focusing on. All right. I think unless there's any questions for me at this point, I can always chime in as you move along with the actual projects and discussing amounts as a judge.
Thank you, Robert. I'd like to say, if y'all would, if you've got a question, write it down, and we'll answer here in a little bit. I don't want anybody to come out of here that doesn't have a question being answered. Right now, I'm going to take and turn it over to Stephen Lawson, and he's an architect that we have been working with. He's from Reese Associates, from Oklahoma City, and he's very familiar with our facilities, and he's helped us on a few other things. So thank you, Stephen.
I got to get accustomed to this first, because it's really awkward to hear yourself. So give me a second. I'm not on the top of my game tonight. I regret the hot dog I had at a truck stop in Amarillo on the way here, so I got my water. I'll do my best. I'm Stephen Lawson with Reese Associates Architects. We have offices in Oklahoma City and Dallas. We're primarily a healthcare architecture firm. We've been in business about 45 years now, so we've been around a while. We primarily focus on healthcare, and within healthcare, we really specialize in rural and community hospitals. I have, I'm a licensed architect. I have 24 years' experience, so I've been doing this for a little while now, and I still enjoy it, so I'll keep doing it. As mentioned, I've been coming out here with my colleagues, Josh and others, for roughly four years now for multiple things, looking at the hospital. There's been lots of ideas over the years, "Well, what about this?" We came out one time with the engineers and spent a whole day in the engineers, did a full assessment of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems within the building. We've done some studies of, for example, how to grow Dr. Purdy's clinic at one point. We helped with some interior renovations of two small clinic pods. If you've been down there, you notice they've been painted and refreshed, kind of on the south end of the facility. And so we've been noodling on this for about four years, just looking and meeting and talking, doing some drawings. And what you see here tonight is kind of a culmination of all that. So I'm excited to be here tonight after four years of talking about this and working on it, to get to this point, to talk to y'all about it. What you're seeing here is a drawing of what we think is a good idea, and we've presented it to the board a few times. We have met a little bit with the staff, but really what the goal is, is if the bond issue is successful, we will update this and renovate, and adjust this. But what this is meant to do is capture the scope of work and the main ideas behind what this hospital renovation for this $9 million bond issue would look like. So also, I think it's important to note, not all of that $9 million would go to this project in the hospital. There's some needs out at the nursing home. It's getting a little bit aged, so we're talking about some of that heat and air? No? Okay, so that's attention. Strike that. So what we have here is a drawing that's primarily organized around a couple ideas. And the idea number one, I'll just walk around here, is getting the clinic facilities consolidated in this area, focusing on the outpatient services in the middle, and then bringing in some renovation to the existing hospital. So what this means is really a centralized check-in and check-out and waiting room for all of the outpatient services with new handicap bathrooms, and really cleaning up some of the circulation, new finishes. Over here, we're talking more about utilizing the old O B O R area and creating a new emergency department with a new ambulance, dedicated ambulance entrance off to the back, consolidating a new waiting room, moving administration and admitting over to this area, and really creating a new central hub in the center of the hospital with a new emergency department A new centralized nurse station here with, that can serve the emergency department, but as well... I keep getting too close to that, don't I? And the nurse station would also serve the inpatient unit. There's not a considerable amount of interior renovation with regarding to moving walls and totally tearing out the inside of the facility and redoing it. After all of our investigation, as well as our engineers' investigation, we believe that the structure and the bones of the hospital are good, and there's enough square footage here to do what needs to be done in this facility. But what we're really looking at is improving some of the flow, improving some of the patient safety, and how the emergency department works, and patient satisfaction, and creating a much better patient and coworker satisfaction through that. We would also update the patient rooms. The patient rooms are good sized. They do have their own dedicated bathrooms. Some facilities, maybe you've seen over the years, they have a bathroom shared between two. So we have a good setup with the inpatient facilities and the inpatient beds, so we would primarily be doing some finish upgrades in that area. One of the other things, and maybe the most important things, are some of the infrastructure work. We're talking about a new 20-year roof, so tearing the existing roof off all the way down to the deck and going back with a new 20-year warranty roof and making the building watertight. We're also talking about new heat and air for the whole facility throughout. There are some very aged components to the HVA system. There are some components that have, that are really at the end of their useful life. I am surprised some of it is still working. I haven't talked to you today, but hopefully it's still all working. But it really is getting to the end of the useful life. Parts are getting harder to find. Repairing them is getting much more difficult. We're also talking about improving the plumbing systems, as well as the major electrical systems within the facility. So really, good structure, it just needs some improvement. There will be some minor improvements and enhancements to the exterior, but really what we need to accomplish first is let's get the inside flowing accurately, functioning properly. Patient safety is of primary importance, and then the infrastructure, the heat and air, the lighting, the electrical, and the plumbing, all of those things that are just a must-have within a hospital. Physical therapy. We're showing physical therapy up in the top in the light blue. Our initial thought was, physical therapy is a very important component to rural healthcare and to Mule Shoe. It touches so many people in the community. We were thinking initially that maybe we would grow and expand the physical therapy, but I think after a couple last meetings and talking to some of the staff, maybe the better option is to move that physical therapy down there into that central area, right there where it's being, where the cursor is, and having it closer to the front door, having it closer to the check-in desk and the registration desk, saving the expense of adding onto the building, because we do believe there is enough square footage to do what we need to do. We would have to relocate the existing clinic there, maybe down to where the business office is currently. That used to be a clinic. It can go back to being a clinic with very little renovation work. And again, that would save some costs, and as mentioned before, just trying to be good stewards of the money. We realize there's not an unlimited budget, and there are some real needs that do need to be addressed. So with that, and thank you again.
Clay, if you'd take and just kind of give an overview of what we're going to be looking at, then we're going to probably pitch you a couple of questions.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Clay Benford. I'm a bond lawyer, not to be confused with a failed bond lawyer. Can't do anybody's work right now. But I practice municipal bond law, which means that I assist cities, counties, school districts, hospital districts, with getting money from investors into their construction funds to bring these types of things off the page, and then work with a financial advisor to provide the investors with security so that they know that they are going to get repaid and allowing you to get the lowest cost of borrowing. Now, what we are doing today is we're talking about the concept of issuing debt that is secured by an ad hoc tax. Now, to the state of Texas, that is viewed as sacrosanct, because a tax lien means that a lien is placed on your home in exchange for your payment to service the debt or the obligation of the entity that is issuing the obligation. Now, you're right as citizens is to vote on that in a democratic process in order to grant the permission to the governing body of the entity to incur that obligation. And so there are procedural frameworks in place that are protective to the voter and to the taxpayer, and we are here to make sure that all of those protections are respected in the process. The first thing that we have to do in a bond election is that we are permitted to conduct an election on one of two uniform election dates. So it has to be on a uniform date. It can't be on a non-uniform date, and it's current May and November of this year. In order to hold an election on one of those two dates, we have to call the election far enough in advance so that you can provide plenty of notice to the electorate as to what's going to happen, when, and what they're going to be voting on. That deadline for the May election is February 14th. Prior to that date, this governing body is required to adopt an election order that includes a proposition that would be placed to the voters in a yes/no format to approve the issuance of bonds for a particular purpose in a not-to-exceed amount. So at that point in time, they have told you the limits on what they can spend the money upon and the maximum amount of money to take to borrow. So the question often is, "Well, what if we authorize this and they don't build what they said they would, or they issue more debt than they promised that they would?" These characteristics are locked in and cannot be changed. It forms what's called a contract with the voters, and it cannot be broken. State law is very clear on this. Once you authorize the particular project and purpose and the dollar amount, those cannot be exceeded. They have to be respected. So we draft this language. It is put in front of the board, and they make a motion, and they act upon it, and they put the proposition out to the voters. And then you have the opportunity to vote yes or no. And based on the results of those elections, assuming that it would be yes, then this board now possesses the authority to issue debt for the purpose in a not-to-exceed amount. Now, that doesn't mean that you automatically become obligated to pay the debt. The analog for this would be a credit card. When you go and get a credit card with a balance, you don't actually incur the obligation until you go out and buy something. That is similar to this. We have a $9 million credit limit essentially at that point in time. Your board would then have to go and look at final construction estimates that Stephen prepares, and the constraints that Robert talked about that are prevalent in the market at the time that we actually go to sell the debt, and we determine how much of that $9 million we utilize. Do we need eight and a half? Do we need eight? And will we afford eight based on interest rate limits or assessed values? The board has the opportunity at a future point after the election to make that determination. Now, presuming that everything holds, we would issue the $9 million in bonds by the board's action to authorize it after Robert and his team had gone to the market and sold your bonds to investors. At that point in time, we would take the transcript of proceedings that start at the time of the election called, all the way through the election proceeding, which means that we show that we adequately posted notice and published notice, that you conducted the election in accordance with law, that you canvassed the election returns, that you then came back and sold the bonds within the parameters the electorate authorized. We take all of that documentation and submit it to the Texas Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General's Office then confirms that we have been complying with law and gives us what we call a validity and enforceability opinion, which means that nobody can come back and question the proceedings that are the basis for us incurring that debt. We then take those final bonds and we exchange them for money from the investors. We give them the bonds and the obligation to receive money, or the right to receive money, our obligation to pay, and we take their money and we put it in the construction account. And then the design goes from more conceptual to more refined, and they will ultimately create a set of plans and specs that will go out for bid, and you will have your construction contract that will result in your project being built. Now, we have a little bit of a, a little bit of a difference here than we have in other places, in that you as a hospital district have a legal limit of 75 cents of total tax rate that you can incur. But this community, within that 75 cent limit, has artificially lowered it and said, "Our maximum tax rate is only 40 cents. We will only take advantage of the first 40 cents of that 75 cents." We are currently at 40 cents, which means we don't have capacity for 10 cents to issue this debt. So we have to have a second proposition that would increase your max tax rate and the amount sufficient to accommodate this debt. So you will see two propositions, assuming that this board acts to put the election order to the community, and it would be to increase your tax rate max and to issue the bonds. Now, from a credit perspective, Robert talked about this being a 20-year bond. If an investor is dependent upon your If an investor is dependent upon your ability to levy a tax to repay its debt, and let's say you increase this tax rate from 40 cents to 50 cents, and then you issue debt that required 10 cents to levy or to amortize the debt, the investor is going to look at that and say, you have no capacity to deal with some kind of a downturn in the economy or a reduction in assessed value. So what we're going to do is for that risk that we're assuming, we're going to charge you a higher interest rate. It might never happen, but they are trying to hedge their bets from a risk perspective. So our recommendation is that you take that max tax rate up a little bit higher so that the investor knows that you have room in order to pay them back. Not that you'll ever have to levy the tax, but you will benefit from a lower interest rate by knowing that you simply have the capacity. So when you see the election order, if it is actually adopted by this board and put to the voters, you're going to see two propositions. One is the tax rate increase. That is just a rate increase, the max increase. That doesn't actually mean what your rate is going to be. And then the bond proposition that tells you the maximum amount of debt and the project will be authorized as per this. So that's my presentation. I can answer questions a second.
One thing he did not mention there, we are anticipating the maximum cap on the tax rate at 60 cents. That gives us the leeway for the amount that we have to charge for what the maximum could be. So if you, when you see that 60 cents, that does not mean that we're charging 60 cents. What we're looking at, the numbers right here, is going to be 51, 52 cents. Is that correct? Okay. One other thing that Stephen didn't mention here also, part of our plans are, is the old nursing home and Dr. Palmer's clinic and everything down at the hospital, that'll all be tore down. It'll be gone. We had intentions of doing that here about a year and a half ago and we was fixing to take and turn them loose and we come to find out, we have a little issue with some asbestos in there. So time we got that done and we timed figured out what it's going to cost to get that done, we didn't have enough money to do it. So we just put all that on hold. But part of the money that we're looking at right now, that that will be taken out, that will be cleaned up, and our intentions and plans are to take that a parking lot so we can have a little bit better access to the hospital and stuff like that. One other thing that Stephen didn't mention also is have a new emergency ambulance entrance center and something a little more modern, up to date, and weather protected over there on that west side. They've got it drawn off to where that it will work. And that's another thing that we're looking at. And I think we're now, we're ready for questions. So here's what we're going to have to do. If somebody has a question, if you'll take and raise your hand, I'll bring the microphone to you. And you need to take and state your name and ask a question, then we can take and go from there. And we have to do that because this is a public meeting and actually this is a hospital board meeting, but it's a public meeting, so we have to have all that on record. So.
Hi, my name's Bill Lyles. Have we paid off the bond that you did us on the nursing home?
It will be paid off February 15th of this year. So we're taking that money that we're already paying on the nursing home and it will be rolled over into the hospital there. That's the reason that it's only going to be going up 10 cents. So when, well, like I say, time it gets all said and done, if you've got a $100,000 home, you're looking at $8.53 per month. Cook Starbucks, a couple soda pops or whatever you want to do. So it's very doable there. Somebody else have a question?
Ron again. What is the timeframe in doing all this work?
Well, our timeframe is right now, we want to take and get this brought up to election in May 7th. And we get that done, we'll take and get the bonds, we'll take and be sold, and we'll get started on it pretty quick. It's going to take them six to eight months just to draw the plans up. So we'll be taking, probably looking next year before they do start doing the actual construction. The timeline of taking and doing it from start to finish was estimated on a year and a half to a year and eight months, somewhere in that area. Because part of that's got to be done on certain sections here, we don't take and disturb the other part over here. So we've got to have a place for the patients and have any protected areas. So I mean, it's, it's just one of the things that you just got to do, take and work one part and come back and pick up another part. Did that answer your question, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody else have a question? Surely this one wasn't bad.
Ben Rose, what are you going to do with cost overruns? They always happen.
We have a 30%, is that correct, contingency already built into this price. We know that we're going to be cost overruns. We have an excellent amount to take and work with. That's it. There is no cost overruns. But we do have a contingency built into it. They're calling it soft clause, soft cost or whatever. I'm calling it heavy cost. We've got things out there, we don't know what's in there, you know, so.
I'm Erin Gonzalez. I have a question about, I know that we need to make investments in infrastructure, but what are you going to do as far as new services that are going to be offered? Does this extend any services that are already available through the hospital or is this going to essentially just update the facility?
Ladies?
So what it will do is it will enhance the services that we are currently providing. Is there a specific service that you're wondering about?
Availability in general. It's a little difficult sometimes and so I refer a lot to you all. And so it's nice to know that we have that coordinated effort with the public health system. That 20-year investment?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And she brings up a very good point about the coordination of services. What it will do is allow us to be able to be more effective because of the structure of the way it is right now. So it, but adding services, no, we're going to enhance services for physical therapy. Most importantly, we're going to enhance the services of our emergency room so that we have the privacy and the safety that, that, you know, any, I think any of you guys that have come in here, coming in through the emergency room, you know, you have to come in those back doors. You go by lab, you go by physical therapy, you go by x-ray, you go by the public bathrooms, you turn, go down the hall, you go in front of admissions, and then you finally make it into the emergency room. And so with having that dedicated entrance, it helps with safety, it helps with privacy, it helps with all those things. So an answer to your question in short is, it will enhance the services that we currently have.
Somebody else have a question? Surely somebody has a question.
I want to see if I've got this right. The nursing home will be paid off February 15th. The money that was designated for that, after that point, will all go to the hospital?
If the bond passes.
If the bond passes.
If the bond passes.
Okay. And there is no funds in this bond package that would go to the nursing home?
Not for the first time, no.
No upkeep? No changes, no nothing?
We have some of this tax money that y'all taking pay in right now that is designated that goes to the nursing home. There is a certain percent of the money that comes in from the taxes that goes into the nursing home account. So there is some money over there.
Where is that designated?
What do you mean?
Where's the funds designated that go to the nursing home?
For emergency funds.
Is it in your budget?
Yes. If it is in there and they have an air conditioner go down, we can take and pull from them funds to take and do the air conditioning. We don't have a choice. If our air conditioner goes out, we have to replace it. If we have funds that we've got to take and send up to the government, there is funds in there to take and do that. It generally gets depleted before the year's out. So, did that answer your question, Cliff?
Yes, thank you.
There was another question that you had the other day. If I can get this right on that bond, the 7.67 cents that we currently pay on that bond right now, when it gets paid off come next year, if we do not pass another bond, we do not get to collect that 7.67 cents. We stay at 32 cents or thereabouts for our maintenance and operations for the hospital. We get to recapture part of that, but Clay said it would take several years to get all the way back up to the 40 cents. So, does that make sense to you? Didn't you ask that the other day?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one more question. What is your anticipated bond rating?
I don't know. The last bond rating was on a refinancing in 2010 and it was an A2 by Moody's Investor Service. A2 is a really good rating. So I, it was a BAA1 on the first financing in 2000 and it was upgraded on the refinancing to an A2. So that's right where I'm looking back.
My question, so it's a 20-year bond. How is 20 years decided?
So, it's a good question and nobody will answer it better.
We just looked at the numbers, 20, 25, and 30. When you start getting above 25 to 30, there wasn't enough, I didn't think there was enough significant lower amount to take and pay for all that extra interest. You know, the more years you get out there, the more that you're going to be paying. If it was at a number where I didn't think that the community could take and handle the 10 cents, we would have probably looked at that. We still haven't done anything yet. If somebody wants to look at that, we can look at that. But that's, that's the reason we did not look any further out. We also looked at different scenarios at the hospital. We looked at doing from the very minimum of fixing the roof, the air conditioner, and electrical, and some of the plumbing. It's one of the things that we take and did that and we got through, nobody would have been able to see that we done anything. And that was going to take, or is it four or five million, somewhere in that area?
Below over five.
Below over five. They do absolutely no cosmetic work. That was to take and do the very basics. So we can step up from eight to nine million, which is what we're looking at here, and we get to do some of the renovations that we was talking about in here. Who else have a question, Brett? Nikki?
Well, you answered part of my question. This is Nick Bammer. And so it does look like you're doing kind of the basic things here. I know there's lots of rules and regulations on hospitals. How does this set us up for the next five, 10, 15 years? Are we looking at doing this again in a few years or does this take care of that?
That's what our anticipation is, that we take and do these things right now, that we're not going to have to take and come back in here a few years later to take and start updating something else because we didn't comply with this other to begin with. Our whole idea is to get this thing good enough for the next 20 years so we don't have to worry about it again. Now, that doesn't mean that they couldn't change the rules, which they do every now and then, so we can take and, but we're going to take and do a responsible action that we believe will be the best for the community, best for the hospital district, and for the residents.
Angela Reyes, I was just wondering, what is this going to look like on the ballot? What is the wording? What are we looking for?
There will be two questions on the ballot. Do you have it on screen?
I don't have it on screen. But we'll read it.
So the first proposition is, we'll have a for or against, you'll have the option to pick for or against the levying of annual taxes by the Board of Directors of the Muleshoe Area Hospital District for hospital purposes at a rate not to exceed 60 cents on each $100 valuation of all taxable property in the district, subject to hospital district taxation. That is specified by statute in your enabling legislation. That is verbatim out of the Enabling Act. The only thing that's blank is the cents, which we filled in with 60. The next proposition would be for or against the issuance of, currently a blank dollar amount, the board has discretion to set that, of bonds by the Muleshoe Area Hospital District for hospital facilities and the levying of a tax and payment thereof. That also is not quite as prescriptive by the legislatures of what that says, but they ask for us to use this guidance. So we're not putting anything in there otherwise than what the state provides for us to deliver to voters.
Did that answer your question? Okay.
You meant to put a lien on? I guess I misunderstood. What did you mean by that?
As with any tax that's levied, whether it be city, county, school district, the remedy for non-payment could be foreclosure on a home. That's why it is required to go through a vote before you can issue debt that is secured by that. This is no different than paying your normal hospital taxes though, but because it is an increase in the rate for a capital project, the voters are given a right to vote. You've already voted on this twice, your 40-cent tax rate. You had an initial tax rate when the hospital district was created, which I believe was 25 cents. Then you had an election in 2000 for the nursing home that was also similar to this. It was a tax rate increase from 25 cents to 40 cents plus the money for the capital project, which was the nursing home. And you, I heard somebody say, when would we come to this again? And it does seem to be a 20-year increment. The last time this happened was 20 years. And so we're doing exactly what was done in 2000 for the nursing home, increasing the tax rate and providing for a capital project. So there is precedent for this as to what's been done in this community.
Someone else? One other thing that we have done and kind of organized a pack committee and so we can take and, if you have some questions and somebody contacts you, Coach Ellis is the head of that, and he has several members on his committee. And they're going to be handing out information around. So, and what they have, information they have will be very accurate information and they will be very informed. So if they do approach you, don't be scared because they do know what they're doing.
Curtis Hunt. A lot of people are talking about what they've done in them with a food court type deal. I think it's more the nursing home, but I didn't, I didn't see the presentation. Is there anything like that in this deal? I think they've got a Starbucks, Bud Rucker, that kind of stuff. I didn't know if they was going to have any type of.
No, that's in the nursing.
That's all I'm saying. I just curious for that.
Someone else have a question?
Nick Bammer. So what about M&amp;O? I mean, do you anticipate an increase in M&amp;O at some point?
Well, it's just like any other business, one of these days, the M&amp;O is going to go up. You're making this in your operations, that's what the M&amp;O stands for. I don't anticipate it going up for a little while. Hopefully, that whenever we take and get that new roof on there, that we'll get everything put back in there like it needs to be, the heating, air conditioning, like it needs to be, that our utilities will go down. And that is one of the big issues. And that is one of the big issues that we have. Maintenance has been one of the big issues at the hospital. And if we get remodeled, hopefully that'll go down, the better. You know, that's what we're paying for, you know? That's what we're anticipating, we haven't paid for it yet. We can go to Jerry over and see how much maintenance is. You know, he stays busy constantly. But that's just, that's what happens when you have an old building, and everybody knows it. Part of this old building was built back in the 40s. It had that update in the 70s. So, like anything else, they are not made to last forever. We're gonna have to do something. I don't wanna say that we gotta do it right now, but there's a great opportunity right now, because we do have low interest rates, and they can't go down much more. If they go down much more, they're gonna be paying us. And that's not gonna happen. But the interest rates are very, very low, and it's something that, you know, we've worked the numbers enough, and we've looked at everything. We believe that this right here is a very, very doable deal, and it's one that take and benefit all of you.
Scott Miller. Preferred Management Services, do we have a long-term lease with them? And if so, do we have a secured lease agreement for the, how much we, they're getting paid?
Okay. All right, so that's a good question, Scott. So, the answer is yes. They're currently just renewed for a five-year contract. Well, it will be in March, but it will be for another five years. So, the answer is yes. Preferred wants to stay here. They want to be able to provide access to health care in Bada County. And so, so does that answer your question? But the answer is yes. Yes.
Leanne Goldman. My question is, so part of the hospital district goes into Palmer County, so are you meeting with Palmer County residents as well?
I have gone yet, even thought about that, to tell you the truth. It's pretty hard to figure out exactly what part of Palmer County that, that people... A lot of them don't even know where they're at. I know, I've got a map. It's basically about a mile north of 145, back south. So, no idea, talking about that, I don't really have any.
Erin Gonzalez. So, you made a comment earlier about making a community announcement, because this is gonna come up, to be decided if it's gonna be put on the ballot. So, I'll be real honest, I work in healthcare, and somebody sent me a screenshot of this this morning, where I would have had no idea. So, how are you gonna make sure that everybody in the community knows that this is coming up, that we need to make a decision, and say, yes, we want this on the ballot, we need to go and vote or not? Because, quite frankly, I understand that Facebook is kind of how things get out, but nobody buys the city paper anymore. How is your committee that you were talking about gonna get out with you?
We have put it on Facebook, and that's not the only other thing we've got. We've put it in the paper, nobody reads it. You know, and residents, it's gonna have to be word of mouth. They did talk about maybe getting some bigger signs and putting up... The Little Yard signs, that's not anything that I don't think anyone would do. That is not my decision to do that. I guess back in the, Colt and their committee was hoping to do. Colt, you wanna answer that?
That's one thing we talked about last night. We had our first meeting last night, and we were basically talking about how nobody takes the newspaper anymore. Used to, you could put information in the newspaper, make it out to everybody in the community. The biggest key we're gonna work on is getting some brochures put out to different places in the community. We feel like, as people visit those places, it'll pass that information along. And I think more as the word gets out, then I think more people, you know, figure out about it, and start asking more questions.
There are statutory requirements for publication and posting of notice. I understand that getting people to actually pay attention to them can be a little bit more difficult, but we have to post notice at least 21 days before the election in at least three public places, plus where we post meeting notices. We have to post notice in every polling location while it's open for polling. We have to put it on the website, and we have to publish it in the newspaper twice, with the first date of publication being at least 35 days before the election. Now, what we also do is we take an informational campaign, because when you call an election, well, you can't, the entity that's holding the election cannot electioneer, meaning they can't advocate for or against the passage of the measure, there is a requirement to get factual information out. And what Robert's team does, typically for school districts, but all of their clients that conduct elections, they prepare a one-page informational that talks about what's being built, but also tax rate implications, what the bond size is, what interest rates are doing, based on their assumptions, how much it's gonna cost per home, and give you all of these tables. And we provide that to the district, and our recommendation is typically for that to get mailed out. Mailed out to the taxpayers, mailed out to the people that are going to be voting. What does the voter log look like? And get that in the mail, because that is their obligation as an organization to get that information out. And whether or not people read it, that's really about all we can do.
Somebody here have a question?
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Robin Atwood. I was just wondering about the cost that we're paying out for life, that force of our laundry. Are we gonna put anything in-house where we could possibly cut costs doing our own laundry, like housekeeping and stuff like that does? Will we be building something to acquire?
That's one of the things that we'll be taking doing, whatever we take and... If we get passed and get this bond passed, then we can take and implement that stuff in there. What we're looking at right up here is just the main things that has to be done, and that's the main thing. And...
So, specifically in regards to laundry services, when we looked at this previously, the cost of adding laundry services would far exceed the cost that we're currently spending, because of, there are no facilities there now. And you add those machines and add the extra labor, and compare that cost to what it costs to have it done outside, it was not feasible. Doesn't mean it won't be in the future. It doesn't mean that if we consider putting into this, it might, it might work out a little bit better, but initially, when it was looked at, it was not feasible to, to build your own laundry in-house. Because of the regulations, too, it makes it quite more, quite a bit more extensive. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but it has been looked at. And yes, it is expensive, but it's probably more expensive to do it in-house.
One other thing that we need to, want y'all being made aware of, are heating and air conditioning system. If they want it to heat, Jerry has taken, get up in the attic somewhere, and get up there and kick it, move a lever, that they can get it to run heating to the roof. If they want air conditioning, gotta do the same thing. There's not a regulated deal, either hot or it's cold. And, pretty much it on that part. Somebody have another question?
This is not so much...
State county.
I'm Earl, parents. I'm a newcomer here, been here 20 years. So, half the people in here have been here before, otherwise. But anyway, we're talking about spending money, we're talking about tax increase, and it is a town hall meeting. Gil, are you gonna be showing this on TV?
It'll be up tomorrow.
Okay. I wanna talk mainly to this group here. We're talking about saving money where we can. You know any school board members, any of the school board members here tonight?
They're looking for an AD.
Did you realize that Bailey County is one of three counties in the state that has a tax on automobiles? We do. I don't know who, I don't know how long ago that was put into place, but three in the whole state of Texas assess taxes on automobiles. And I feel like this is my only opportunity to get up in front of the public and say, why is there not two in the state of Texas? Why is Bailey County still doing that? Somebody told me last week that their income is like $70,000 a year for that. I worked for an old boy one time, he owned a fuel company. He said that there's never, I've never seen a temporary fuel tax, never. It's sold as temporary, once it gets on the books, it's there. You can't ever get it off. Well, that's the way I see this tax on our cars, and pickups, and stuff. If we're ever, ever, and I may be the only one in here that wants that off, if we're ever gonna get it off, now's the time. And we talk to our school board members and say, hey, as an act of faith, because I believe we need a new hospital, or an improved hospital. I believe it's an integral part of the town, and it'll make or break depending on the quality of health care we have. So, as an act of faith, because I know the city a couple of years ago said, we're not assessing city taxes on the cars and the pickups, but the school still is. So, I've come to you guys and say, talk to your school board members and say, look, it looks like we're all trying to work together. We're all trying to make this work. You guys don't need to be assessing taxes on 10-year-old cars, from brand-new cars to 10-years-old. That's what they assess. So, think about it, do what your heart tells you to do, and I may be the only one. Thank you.
Cindy Purdy. First of all, let me tell you that Bruce was gonna be here, but he has a sick baby in the hospital, so he is where he is needed. We are very excited, bored about what you are doing, the possibilities of enhancing our medical services for our children, our grandchildren, and... These two guys and I were on the committee when we passed a huge bond for the school. Stacy was just telling me that they presented 23 presentations around our community over the time from when we started to the bond election. It's very difficult. Erin, I appreciate what you said about notification on that, because we were wondering, I had seen it, but then I couldn't find it anymore. It's so important, and we concentrated on the two biggest employers in Mule Shoe, one being the school, one being the hospital. And the superintendent let the teachers out to go vote, because it was that important. The hospital at that time encouraged the hospital employees to get out and vote. The community really worked hard for our school bond, and I know we can do it for our hospital bond. And we're really excited, really appreciate all of your work, all of the planning that you have done. I'm gonna hand this to Stacy, because he was the head of the school. I'm sure you're excited about talking, but just the communication, the factor of getting the word out, the positive word out.
Stacy, I would say that the thing is, you've gotta communicate the need, the desperate situation with the facilities and that sort of thing. There are all these tensions between maintenance and payroll, and those kind of operating things. But when people see the need, when they realize the air conditioner is X number of years old, that you're spending X number of dollars a year to keep that air conditioner running, and it's still not working efficiently, it kind of softens the idea of what's going on. And so, and everybody has a roof, and anybody who's ever had a leaky roof knows the value of having a roof that doesn't leak. And so, and the one thing that you guys are gonna have that we faced a little bit at the school is, anytime you tear into a wall, you don't really know what's in that wall until you go to 20. And so, you've gotta build in some of that, and you can communicate those kinds of things. But I'm part of helping Colt out, and we'll get this, we'll get this done.
You know, getting the word out, that's kind of a problem anymore. And if anybody's on Facebook, you can go back in there and look at the hospital board election. Is that what it's called? Is that what it is called?
Mule Shoe.
Mule Shoe, a bond. Okay. You can click on that, you can take and follow that. If you take and start sharing it, that's one thing, one way to get the word out. Or if you're taking a visit with someone, just mention it, you know? You've got some good information there. We've got some good numbers to take and work with. We can take and work these. So, you know, there's been some already that, you know, somebody's spreading some rumors that outrageous numbers. Well, that's not that a lot. These are some numbers that'll work. Something that will work, that'll work for everybody. Someone have another question? Nope, very, very quiet. Appreciate that.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question?
Wrong again. This is not so much a question as really a statement. Most of us when we go to the hospital, we're either in an emergency room or in there to see someone, or in the room. But if you've ever gone back, way on back to the old nursing home and the old mechanic room where Jerry works, we really do need the update. And, you know, for each individual's cost, and I know it's hard for some, but the hospital is very vital to this community. And we have some good doctors, and I know I've been blessed to know Dr. Purdy, and he's blessed this hospital a great deal. So, you know, I'm sure Alan, if you wanna go see, he'd take a tour through the hospital and show you what we're talking about. And if you take that tour, you'll come out and say, yes, we do need an updated hospital.
Leanne Goldman. Dr. Burke is here, and I just wonder what he would say about attracting physicians and things like that, and how important a facility is.
You can stand up over here, so I can get your camera.
All right. Hi, my name's Dr. Burke. I've lived here since July of 2018. I started working here August 2018. I really look for this kind of practice, but I think we talked about it a little bit at the last board meeting, that it would help attract not just maybe future physicians, but nursing staff as well, nurses that have graduated from... Nurses that have graduated from Lubbock and are looking for a job, especially some young ladies that are looking to be nurses when they come here and work. I think that would go a long ways. Retaining staff as well. I can say I'm excited about this. I think it's great for the community and it's great for being able to provide medical care to this community as well.
I had one to speak, but about a year ago, I brought to the board and told them I wanted to write an article about what the hospital meant to the community. And I did that, and it was in the newspaper. Probably wasn't seen by many, it was kinda hidden. And I did a lot of research. And as Mrs. Purdy pointed out, the two largest employers in Mewshue are the school and our hospital district. Our hospital district employs close to 95, between 95 and 100 people. Think of the households that that affects. Also, did you know that, I don't know if you've ever had this happen in your personal life, that they can have a, what is called a diversion at the larger hospitals? When you have a flu or strep or some other pneumonia epidemic? That sometimes we will have people that we need to transfer. And we had called Lubbock and Amarillo and they said, we can't take anymore. So what would we do if this place, if Mewshue wasn't here? Another large study I did, and I really don't think I got all the numbers when I did it, because I didn't realize at the time that we had started using more than one helicopter service. You would not believe the times the helicopter comes into Mewshue a week, at least once a week. But for a while, I worked at the school administration office for 25 years. So, I can stand there and hear the helicopter coming in. And I could count that it was coming in at least three times a week. Because it comes over our building to land two blocks away at the hospital. What would we do if we did not have the services we have to stabilize those patients, to get those to another community? There are just so many things that a rural hospital does. And I could go on and on. I have the list that I wrote last year, and I browsed over it this morning, but have been busy since then. Anyway, that kinda goes back to your question to Dr. Burke. What, you know, what's the importance? There are just so many little things, you know? I, I even know of a personal story, it wasn't my family, but a friend. This was many, many, many years ago. But they did not use the hospital here. A woman had a husband that had a heart attack. She decided to put him in the car and drive him to the VA hospital, and he died in route. You know, he died in her vehicle 30 minutes down the road. Instead of bringing him to a small rural hospital where he could be stabilized and transferred on. And let me mention one more thing, and then I will give this back to Alan. Because I hadn't even planned to speak, but I just want people to know how important it is, like I said, to stabilize. Another huge thing for our little hospital is the, I just went blank, swing bed program. I don't know how many of you are, are aware of that. So, and I've had friends that say, oh, well, you know, I don't use a hospital here, or I go to Lubbock or this or that. Never fails that, you know, they have a loved one that is transferred to Mewshue or has to be flown to Mewshue or has to be brought to Mewshue having a heart attack, something. But our swing bed program has been so successful. I will even have a next-door neighbor that would tell you that. And she had not come back, she went to Lubbock, she had shoulder surgery. She thought she was gonna be home in six days. Well, it did not go quite as smoothly as she thought, and she spent about 10 days in the hospital in Lubbock. And she thought they were going to put her in Trust Point. I'm not visiting Trust Point or anywhere else. But she wanted to be in Mewshue. You know, she wanted her next-door neighbor to come see her. She wanted her daughter who lives out at Last Valley to come and see her daily. And, and so, and you know the people. So when you're stuck in Lubbock rehabbing, that's much harder. And swing bed is an excellent program for Mewshue. And that's where the enhanced rehabilitation, the enhanced physical therapy, speech therapy, what other therapies? Occupational therapy, those are so important. Respiratory therapy? And so, we're just so thankful to have those. But I can't tell you how nice it is to come back to Mewshue and recoup if you've had something done. I know that I would want one of my parents, or my husband, or any family member to be able to have them. That is so handy, especially if you're a working person. If you're, you know, if you have to get off work each day and go check on that person or that's in Lubbock. I mean, Lubbock's wonderful. But we just don't realize how many services we offer and how important they are to this small town. And like I said, number one being, we employ 95 people. That affects 95 households. So, that's huge in, in a small town. And so I think those are things that we need to consider. Okay? Thanks.
Someone else?
She's talking about that information that she put in the paper. And if y'all come in, y'all probably got a copy of that. You need to read that. This hospital does a whole lot more than what a lot of people think it does. Unless you're down there all the time, you really don't know. But there is, a lot of stuff goes on down there. This hospital is vital to this area. I'd like to have it look a little nicer, be a lot more accessible to the community. And we can't do it sitting on what we got. What it boils down to. And I don't want to take any, get it remodeled. Don't wanna build a new, I don't think we're gonna afford it. So we can't afford this remodel here. Anybody else have a question? Y'all have any comments you wanna make? Add two, take away. Do we wanna vote on that? Do we have to have certain wordage to take and do that?
I think you probably wanna show your agenda on the board if you can. You don't have one, can you go right there? I'm sorry. As far as 9 million? Yeah. Yes, we have, there's a pocket we're giving. So, so you would, so we have an agenda item, I'll just read this off. Consider and act upon an order calling a maximum tax rate and bond election to be held by the Mewshue area hospital district, making provision for the conduct of the election and resolving other matters incident and related to such election. This will give you the opportunity to discuss it. Someone could make a motion to approve the order calling the maximum tax rate election at 60 cents and a bond election in the amount of 9 million. Have then do your motion on the floor, you can discuss it and then take a vote.
I'll so move. A second.
Gail Moody, Dana Segaty. We have a motion on the floor to take and consider the bond election. The maximum amount on the bond will be $90,000. We will take and raise our tax cap to 60 cents. All those in papers, raise your hand. All those, nobody opposed. Hit passes, Jody. So, we order the election. I wanna thank each and every one of y'all for coming out and hearing us. And I appreciate the questions so much. You know, because if you have a question and you don't get it answered, you start thinking about things and it just starts building and building and building. Because you don't have right information. So if you have a question, we'll answer it. And from now on, if you have a question, you can call me, you can call anyone on the board, you can call Colt, you can call the hospital down there, Dennis's office, and he can refer back to me or whatever. But I want everybody to know that, you know, we're here to take and answer your questions. We're gonna be out taking canvassing the community, trying to promote this. So, somebody comes knocking on your door, you kinda know what's going on.
Steven Lawson with Reese Architects again. Josh and I will stay after, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. I know this may be a little difficult to read on the screen for some of the people in the back. So we'll go over to the boards, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any clarity to what's been up on the screen.
Yeah, this, what he has drawn off is not drawn in concrete. We will still take and do some changing on it. These are just preliminary drawings, preliminary thinking. But it is a plan that we can take and start working toward that area.
Make a motion, will you, Jerry?
Motion made by Dana, second by Zona. Then we take and adjourn. All those in papers, say aye. Motion carried. Thank y'all for coming out, I really did thank y'all a lot.